I call the meeting to order for the Marlington Local School District Board of Education, regular meeting on June 4, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Mr. Noel, would you have our invocation?
I sure will. Laura Hess, please. Father, have me thank you for another day, Lord, and opportunity to serve in this great district. I want also thank you for a great close to the end of school year. Lord, one that was a tough one for all of our folks here in the district. And I just thank you so much that we were able to close in a positive way. Special blessing, Lord, to our seniors as they move on to the next stage and next season in their lives. We ask that you bless all their future plans. For all of our staff and parents and students, I just pray for a restful summer and a time to rekindle. Lord, we just ask you bless our time and meeting together this evening. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The reading of the mission statement will be done by Mr. Hagan.
In collaboration, staff, community, parents, students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong practice to stand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the high standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Mrs. Brueker, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gabbro.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Mrs. Humphries.
Here.
Dr. Mason.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
The adoption of the meeting agenda, are there any additions or corrections? I recommend that the Marlington Local Board of Education adopt the following agenda for the June 4, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion?
No moves.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question, who created the agenda?
The agenda was created by Mr. Noel, the board president, vice president, and the treasurer. Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabbro.
Yes.
Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries.
Yes.
Dr. Mason.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Executive sessions, the Marlington Local School District Board of Education, the board, to recess into two consecutive executive sessions for the purpose of considering the employment and compensation of a public employee/official, and two conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. All matters discussed in these consecutive executive sessions are designated to the public officials and employees as confidential pursuant to revised Code 103 point, excuse me, 102.03b because of the status of the proceedings and/or circumstances under which the information will be received and preserving its confidentiality is necessary to the proper conduct of government business. Is there a motion for the executive session?
No move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabbro.
Yes.
Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries.
Yes.
Dr. Mason.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Or everyone, please log out of your public meeting and you will find a link to the Zoom meeting that was sent to you by Mr. Markling and log into your Zoom meeting and we'll proceed with executive session. Thank you.
Yeah, Ben, good. I see you. Okay. Just want to make sure you're with us, buddy.
Yeah.
All right.
screams back on two whenever everybody's connected. Yeah, I don't see her yet. There she comes.
Everybody ready? Katie, we were declared, the board was declared out of executive session at 7:53 PM for your minutes. And we're moving on with the public participation portion of the meeting. And Mrs. Brueker, if you would read the public participation section into the minutes, I would appreciate it.
Do you want me to read the paragraph and the words or just the people or just the names?
Um, I guess since this is the first time we've done it this way, if you don't mind reading that paragraph and then reading the names of the individuals that have submitted letters.
Sure. Okay, so public participation. Person persons wishing to present information or items to the board shall submit a written statement along with their names and directory information in a word format for the treasurer on or before three o'clock PM on Friday prior to the regular meeting of the board. The treasurer shall then submit each submit such timely written statements to each board member before the next regular meeting of the board. At the next regular meeting of the board, the treasurer shall identify the name of each person who submitted a written statement, and such written statements shall be entered into the minutes but not read aloud at the regular board meeting. There shall be no public participation at such board meetings. Those presenting written statements. Their names are Poloscope Light, Jake Peck, Amy Coleman, Jenny Menegay.
Thank you, Mrs. Brueker. And then if you could get those letters attached to our actual minutes for when we approve them at the next meeting, I think that would be helpful. And moving to new business, Mr. Noel, since you work closely with these contracts, if you would present this information to the board?
Sure. Under the Marlboro lighting contract, that recommend motion approved First Choice Electric for the Marlboro lighting project as presented and to be marked exhibit PP.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Is this attached to our agenda, Joe?
The exhibit is not yet, no.
Okay, but that would be what we were emailed? The just the price of the quote?
No, no, this would be more of a kind of like a written type of format like we talked about for the roofing thing as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to accept superintendent's recommendation to approve First Choice Electric for the Marlboro lighting project as presented and will be, I guess, will be attached as exhibit PP?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question about just Marlboro in general. I had a couple of community members tell me that they were driving past and they saw four men standing outside and they recognized one as Steve Viscount. And I'm not quite sure why Mr. Viscount would be there at Marlboro Elementary during the day standing there talking with three other men, but I just wondered because I don't recall having hired him for anything. So I'm just asking why he would be there talking with people.
Joe, do you want to address that? Or we can reach out to Plug Smart?
Well, my understanding after talking to Plug Smart is that Mr. Viscount is working for Plug Smart as an employee. And based on his location in the district, he's been asked to assist with some of their plans and procedures working for Plug Smart. So that's my understanding.
And Joe, could you, um, do you have the actual amount of the lighting project? I know the paper that we were given said that First Choice came in at almost 14,000 under budget.
Right. Katie's probably going to have to help me on this, but I saw the payout the other day, Katie. I don't know if you have that handier than I do, but I believe the lighting was like 45,000. Katie, can you confirm that?
Uh, I, no, I don't have that.
Okay.
But the details of that will be attached. Once you receive that from Plug Smart, I believe approved tonight, you'll get that and attach it to the minutes.
Right.
Um, I think it's important to acknowledge that this is one of our local providers and that was coming under budget by that significant amount.
Yeah, I've said numerous times that, you know, my main goal at the end of the day is to have local contractors getting as many job opportunities as we can in the district. And, you know, this is another another local group. So I appreciate that.
Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved three two.
Okay, let's not recommend motion to approve Robertson Heating Supply Company for the Marlboro Mechanical Project as presented and to be marked exhibit Q Q.
Is there a recommendation to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Again, I think it's important to recognize that Robertson's came in almost $3,000 under budget, but the more important fact, I believe, is that they're actually almost 30,000 under the next vendor that had submitted a quote, and they are our local distributor, and we greatly appreciate their support of our project.
Yeah, and another nice thing is some of the equipment that we're going to be using at Marlboro is going to be very similar to what we have here at the high school. And I think that's a nice win-win too, when you're looking at equipment and products and the availability. And obviously, they're a five-minute call away being local, so.
I believe Plug Smart people mentioned that it was actually a step up in the equipment too that had quoted, so are they under budget and less than the next price, but the equipment is, we're getting even more for our money.
More value?
Yeah, Scott's got some nice, really talented engineering people there, and they're able to take a look at some of the specs of these projects and kind of take it to their drawing board, for lack of a better term. And I give Will and Plug Smart a lot of credit because, you know, I've I've told them we want to work with our local people and they're all in and interested in hearing their input, which I don't know if that's true with everything, but at least with the working with Will and relationship I've had, he's he's been all about that, so.
Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved three two.
Moving on to the minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the following meetings? The regular meeting dated May 21st, 2020, and the special meeting dated May 26th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Under the personnel consent agenda, I'll read the first one and then I'll let Mr. Noel make his recommendations on the remaining ones. Under administrative personnel, recommend the motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Noel Superintendent effective August 1st, 2020.
And recommend a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Graholy as elementary principal and migrant director effective August 1, 2020. Recommend motion to transfer Michael Farrell from assistant director to director of the migrant program. And then recommend motion to hire Ms. Kitty Mort as the assistant director for the migrant program. And recommend a motion to hire Michelle Striefler as the cook for our summer meals program effective June 8, 2020.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations for employment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Again, I think it's important to recognize that Robertson's came in almost $3,000 under budget, but the more important fact, I believe, is that they're actually almost 30,000 under the next vendor that had submitted a quote, and they are our local distributor, and we greatly appreciate their support of our project.
Yeah, and another nice thing is some of the equipment that we're going to be using at Marlboro is going to be very similar to what we have here at the high school. And I think that's a nice win-win too, when you're looking at equipment and products and the availability. And obviously, they're a five-minute call away being local, so.
I believe Plug Smart people mentioned that it was actually a step up in the equipment too that had quoted, so are they under budget and less than the next price, but the equipment is, we're getting even more for our money.
More value?
Yeah, Scott's got some nice, really talented engineering people there, and they're able to take a look at some of the specs of these projects and kind of take it to their drawing board, for lack of a better term. And I give Will and Plug Smart a lot of credit because, you know, I've I've told them we want to work with our local people and they're all in and interested in hearing their input, which I don't know if that's true with everything, but at least with the working with Will and relationship I've had, he's he's been all about that, so.
Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved three two.
Moving on to the minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the following meetings? The regular meeting dated May 21st, 2020, and the special meeting dated May 26th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Under the personnel consent agenda, I'll read the first one and then I'll let Mr. Noel make his recommendations on the remaining ones. Under administrative personnel, recommend the motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Noel Superintendent effective August 1st, 2020.
And recommend a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Graholy as elementary principal and migrant director effective August 1, 2020. Recommend motion to transfer Michael Farrell from assistant director to director of the migrant program. And then recommend motion to hire Ms. Kitty Mort as the assistant director for the migrant program. And recommend a motion to hire Michelle Striefler as the cook for our summer meals program effective June 8, 2020.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations for employment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Again, I think it's important to recognize that Robertson's came in almost $3,000 under budget, but the more important fact, I believe, is that they're actually almost 30,000 under the next vendor that had submitted a quote, and they are our local distributor, and we greatly appreciate their support of our project.
Yeah, and another nice thing is some of the equipment that we're going to be using at Marlboro is going to be very similar to what we have here at the high school. And I think that's a nice win-win too, when you're looking at equipment and products and the availability. And obviously, they're a five-minute call away being local, so.
I believe Plug Smart people mentioned that it was actually a step up in the equipment too that had quoted, so are they under budget and less than the next price, but the equipment is, we're getting even more for our money.
More value?
Yeah, Scott's got some nice, really talented engineering people there, and they're able to take a look at some of the specs of these projects and kind of take it to their drawing board, for lack of a better term. And I give Will and Plug Smart a lot of credit because, you know, I've I've told them we want to work with our local people and they're all in and interested in hearing their input, which I don't know if that's true with everything, but at least with the working with Will and relationship I've had, he's he's been all about that, so.
Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Under the personnel consent agenda, I'll read the first one and then I'll let Mr. Noel make his recommendations on the remaining ones. Under administrative personnel, recommend the motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Noel Superintendent effective August 1st, 2020.
And recommend a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Graholy as elementary principal and migrant director effective August 1, 2020. Recommend motion to transfer Michael Farrell from assistant director to director of the migrant program. And then recommend motion to hire Ms. Kitty Mort as the assistant director for the migrant program. And recommend a motion to hire Michelle Striefler as the cook for our summer meals program effective June 8, 2020.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations for employment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Again, I think it's important to recognize that Robertson's came in almost $3,000 under budget, but the more important fact, I believe, is that they're actually almost 30,000 under the next vendor that had submitted a quote, and they are our local distributor, and we greatly appreciate their support of our project.
Yeah, and another nice thing is some of the equipment that we're going to be using at Marlboro is going to be very similar to what we have here at the high school. And I think that's a nice win-win too, when you're looking at equipment and products and the availability. And obviously, they're a five-minute call away being local, so.
I believe Plug Smart people mentioned that it was actually a step up in the equipment too that had quoted, so are they under budget and less than the next price, but the equipment is, we're getting even more for our money.
More value?
Yeah, Scott's got some nice, really talented engineering people there, and they're able to take a look at some of the specs of these projects and kind of take it to their drawing board, for lack of a better term. And I give Will and Plug Smart a lot of credit because, you know, I've I've told them we want to work with our local people and they're all in and interested in hearing their input, which I don't know if that's true with everything, but at least with the working with Will and relationship I've had, he's he's been all about that, so.
Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved three two.
Moving on to the minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the following meetings? The regular meeting dated May 21st, 2020, and the special meeting dated May 26th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brueker, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Under the personnel consent agenda, I'll read the first one and then I'll let Mr. Noel make his recommendations on the remaining ones. Under administrative personnel, recommend the motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Noel Superintendent effective August 1st, 2020.
And recommend a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Graholy as elementary principal and migrant director effective August 1, 2020. Recommend motion to transfer Michael Farrell from assistant director to director of the migrant program. And then recommend motion to hire Ms. Kitty Mort as the assistant director for the migrant program. And recommend a motion to hire Michelle Striefler as the cook for our summer meals program effective June 8, 2020.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations for employment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Joe, I want to say that Marlington is definitely losing a heartbeat. That has been here for eight years. You've done excellent work. Canfield did a countrywide search and ended up with someone next door. And that tells me that they see your value, and there's so many in this community that do. Your family is excellent. I love your wife. She is a saint on earth, and I thank you for your work.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. We are going to miss you.
Thank you.
And so I wish to thank Mr. Noel for his services to the district as well as Mr. Graholy. We appreciate his services to the district as well.
Thank you.
And for, I just want to mention, I wanted to make sure that everyone received the email from Mr. Graholy with the heartening YouTube video that he sent out to everyone. If you haven't watched it yet, I would encourage you all to tune into that. It was very nicely done and spoke. It reminds us what we're in education for, for our staff and our students, and was just very nicely done, and we appreciate everything that Marlington does.
Yeah, and I was I was really floored by that. I mean, I've been talking about this heartening piece for years now, and that video just just popped it off to the T for me. And like I said, I'm gonna go to my grave believing that, folks, that that heartening piece is what it's all about in education, making connections with kids. And I mean, there's different, some awesome things happening here.
Yeah, and another nice thing is some of the equipment that we're going to be using at Marlboro is going to be very similar to what we have here at the high school. And I think that's a nice win-win too, when you're looking at equipment and products and the availability. And obviously, they're five minute call away being local, so.
I believe Plug Smart people mentioned that it was actually a step up in the equipment too that had quoted, so. I don't know if they're under budget and less than the next price, but the equipment is, we're getting even more for our money.
More value.
Same.
Yeah, I mean Scott's got some nice, really talented engineering people there and they're able to take a look at some of the specs of these projects and kind of take it to their drawing board, for lack of a better term. And I give Will and Plug Smart a lot of credit because, you know, I've, I've told them we want to work with our local people and they're all in and and interested in hearing their input, which I don't know if that's true with everything. But at least with the working with Will and relationship I've had, he's, he's been all about that, so.
Yeah.
Mrs. Brewer, please call the role.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes?
Mr. Hagan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Humphries? Dr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved three, two.
Moving on to the minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the following meetings? The regular meeting dated May 21st, 2020, and the special meeting dated May 26th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Brewer, please call the role.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero.
Under the personnel consent agenda, I'll read the first one and then I'll let Mr. Noel make his recommendations on the remaining ones. Under administrative personnel, recommend motion to accept the resignation of Joseph Noel Superintendent effective August 1st, 2020.
And recommend a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Graholy as elementary principal and migrant director effective August 1, 2020. Record motion to transfer Michael Farrell from assistant director to director of the migrant program. And then recommend motion to hire Ms. Kitty Mort as the assistant director for the migrant program. And recommend a motion to hire Michelle Spreefler as the cook for our summer meals program effective June 8, 2020.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations for employment?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Joe, I want to say that Marlington is definitely losing a heartbeat. That has been here for eight years. You've done excellent work. Canfield did a countrywide search and ended up with someone next door. And that tells me that they see your value and there's so many in this community that do. Your family is excellent. I love your wife. She is a saint on earth and I thank you for your work.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. We are going to miss you.
Yeah, thank you.
And so I wish to thank Mr. Noel for his services to the district as well as Mr. Graholy. We appreciate his services to the district as well.
Thank you.
And for, I just want to mention, I wanted to make sure that everyone received the email from Mr. Graholy with the heartening YouTube video that he sent out to everyone. If you haven't watched it yet, I would encourage you all to tune into that. It was very nicely done and spoke. It reminds us what we're in education for, for our staff and our students and was just very nicely done and we appreciate everything that Marlington does.
Yeah, and I was, I was really floored by that. I mean, I've been talking about this heartening piece for years now. And that video just, just popped it off to the T for me. And and like I said, I'm gonna go to my grave believing that, folks, that that heartening piece is what it's all about in education and making connections with kids. And I mean, there's different, some awesome things happening here. So that was a nice, nice video.
That's very good. Mrs. Brewer, please call the role.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Sorry, was, yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Reluctantly, yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero.
The next Board of Education meeting will be the regular meeting on June 18th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via electronic remote technology. And then I will be reaching out to all of you as soon as we have, can organize some special meetings to consider the employment compensation of public employee slash public officials. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Hey, Carolyn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Prior to adjourning, I don't know how this keeps happening, but I'd like to make an announcement that once again, it's one of my kid's birthdays tonight.
Oh.
My little boy just turned eight, so I wanted to wish him happy birthday. Happy birthday, Josway. I love you. And this is the last one for the year.
Well, happy birthday from all of us.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Brewer, please call the role.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
See ya.